This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So, welcome everybody to, thank you for making the time on a Friday evening. It's 5:30 or so, today is February 23rd, 2024. This is the City Council Property Committee. The two, the three members are here, myself, Councillor Kuzynski, and Councillor Peak. Do we have any minutes?
Did I not send them? I might have not sent them.
Maybe you did, I don't know. Well, look, we'll check next day. You might have sent them, but I didn't see them.
Okay.
Uh, we'll, we'll check the extra next week. Uh, at this time, um, uh, we do, we have public speak if there's, so what about just the, the items are on our agenda today are just, uh, ongoing discussion of the poll requests from Eversource for Loudville Road. We do have a public speak section. This would be for anything that's not on the agenda, I will allow public speak, um, at various times during, uh, the Loudville Road, uh, discussion. Are you here for that, sir?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Just, uh, I try to run these meetings similar to city council meetings. If you'd like to speak, just raise your hand. I don't really limit time, but if you're going on for a while, I might interrupt just to make sure no, anyone else might have some comments. So with that, um, we'll move into our agenda topic, which is the, uh, poll requests on Loudville Road. As everyone, just to recap, we had, um, approved, uh, those polls. There was however, a question of, um, whether they were already up and when we installed and when we arrived at our public hearing, we discovered that they were indeed, um, already installed and relocated. Additionally, there's another poll, just to update the public, uh, 100 slash 63 asks, which is a support poll. And, um, in the meantime, um, we've had a few conversations, including with the city solicitor, the city council president, I think will be president to fill us in on that. Okay, but he is not going to be at the meeting. So I can fill people in to, um, the extent that my, I have my understanding of that. Mostly we're here today to discuss, this is kind of an unusual situation. We haven't had this happen before, to my knowledge. So, um, I spoke to the council president who consulted with the city solicitor and basically, um, the options essentially were to ask the utility to remove the polls and then deliberate over what to do at that point, or to allow them to keep them up, um, with some either conditions or obviously acknowledgement and maybe, uh, some sort of public statement about how this happened. And that's pretty much it. There's no real penalty per se for the, for the, uh, utility company, other than us asking them to remove them at this point. With that being said, I will just open up the floor to, um, our, well, first I'll ask if there's any public comments before we move on to, um, our, uh, the two other members of the committee. Did you want to say anything now, or are you just here to observe this chat?
Well, let's let it flow. The folks from Eversource, who are their credentials, who are they?
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Okay, thank you.
Doug, looks like guys, uh, any comments from the members of the committee before we get moving with Eversource?
Wanted to point out, I drove by the polls today. And not only are the polls up, but it looks like the wires have all been installed.
It's energized.
Yeah.
It's energized.
It's energized and energized across the entire system. So before, as far as I could tell, the actual wires went up, but now they are.
Okay, Councillor Peak, any comments?
Yeah, I guess, um, really, when, when this initial thing happened, there, there really didn't seem to be anything controversial to me about the idea of these, you know, of the, these polls being replaced. The issues of why they want to replace them seemed to make enough sense, but if we're going to have this process where these things, um, generally get approved by, uh, the council, then I want to understand, uh, sort of how this happened and, uh, and, and sort of what, what the deal is, or what we can sort of expect, uh, going forward. I guess that's what I'm really hoping to get out of this meeting, because I, to be honest, I'm still quite confused about a lot of this whole thing.
Yeah, I agree. And I mean, I've, I've spent, uh, this is an hour during my seventh year on the property committee. And this is the first time something like this came up. I, I, I assume, and I, in good faith, I think this is probably some sort of honest mistake. So, um, let's, I, my goal, um, obviously with, with deference to, uh, the two other members of the committee is to try to find a way to move forward, um, amicably and productively, uh, between the council and the utility. So that being said, unless there are objections, I'd like to open it up to, we have three, um, representatives here from the utility. Whoever wants to speak first, just either raise your hand, either virtually or, um, okay. So we have, uh, Michael DeFraga?
Yes, Michael Fraga.
Okay, great, sir. You have the floor. Please, uh, just introduce yourself, um, let us know who you represent, what your position is, et cetera. And maybe illuminate us a little bit about what's going on here.
Certainly. So I'm Michael Fraga, um, Operations Manager for the Hadley District. Also on the call with me, we have Nick Kriegel, who is a Senior Supervisor, who runs the overhead department and projects for the district, and Adam, who is our designer. So certainly an oversight and a mistake on our part to get these polls in the ground. This is an area we've been targeting rehabilitation and, um, reconductoring for some time now. We had the design in typically sooner than we do. It was slated for this year. We had the design early November. We put it out to bid for an early start at the, you know, February, January timeframe-ish. But at that point, we didn't know that there was a petition still in the works. The bid was received by the contractor as doing the work, the deconstruction. And they asked if they could start the work in January, as they were late on work. And they would be just setting the like-for-like polls. So we have a process here, and this is why this is never, almost never happens, is that we have requirements in our system that, um, once a poll petition is requested, that keeps the job from progressing to scheduling. Unfortunately, we bypassed that so that we could get this project started. Weather was good in January, we had a relatively mild winter so far, so, um, the project project progressed quicker than we anticipated. And, um, the contractor went ahead and set those polls. And at some point, because it was bypassed, I think the impression by my team was that we already had that petition. It could, because we had bypassed it into scheduling, um, it was, it was just an oversight and that's all, you know. So, going forward, you know, we'd like to find some kind of amicable way to, to proceed here. Obviously, you know, these polls were set without permission from the council and, and we respect that. We very much prefer us to, um, not have to pull these out. As far as, you know, continuing work goes, now I'll discuss some, some, um, controls that we'll put in to prevent this from happening as well, as I, but as far as like where we were since the last time, since we were notified of this petition. Unfortunately, we were so far along in the process there. You know, with getting the polls, before we pull wire, we typically scab out the wire and get it out of the way. And it puts the system in a vulnerable position, you know, as before, right before we pull the wire. And then at that point, we really try to get, as soon as that, the, all the, we do all the preparations for pulling the wire, we like to get the wire up and the load cut over to that more stable system. Because during that timeframe, we have, we're exposed to, you know, any kind of storm or any kind of, um, tree-related issues would immediately take that line down, because it's a compromised position. So I did make the decision a week and a half ago, when I found out the petition, you know, the polls were in the ground already. Again, we have the system in a vulnerable state, you know, with customers at risk. And I made the decision to go ahead and put the wire up. And then, um, we will, you know, looking for, to sit down with the board and really come up with a solution here as far as if there's any issues with any locations, or if there's any, um, recommendations for the board, you know, by the board, we will, you know, certainly go back and make any repairs or adjustments that are needed or recommended by the board. As far as pulling them out, that's going to be, you know, a little bit trickier, because they are, you know, this newer conductor is a little heavier than the old conductor. So that's why in certain areas where there was a long span, it does require some additional support. There's, you know, I'd have to look case by case, what we can do if the, you know, if there's a specific location that does not, you know, has an issue with, but, um, certainly we'll do whatever it takes to rectify the situation, because being that it was our mistake. Going forward, um, I've, you know, this, this requirement that was bypassed in the system, we, um, I made a policy here in Western Mass, now that we are, we will not be bypassing that. And I, we also put a, a hold on, there's only two people in Western Mass that can sign off that requirement. One being our director, who is the highest ranking, um, operations person in Western Mass. And two is the clerk, our clerk, who typically receives the signed paperwork stamped from the, from the town once we receive, once, when, after the meeting, once we receive the paperwork. So those are the two people in Western Mass that can sign off this requirement going forward. And I think that's the backdrop of it, you know, really, you know, honest mistake, but with good intentions to really try to like, you know, get a project, you know, me and my team here in, in Hadley, this is a frequent flyer out, out for us. Every time, you know, we get a, a significant storm in this area, you know, we have a big block of customers there that's out. And, you know, we're a little ambitious to get this project rolling, you know, and talking to my team, you know, I'm like, you know, I don't know if, you know, going forward, you know, until, you, I mean, obviously, we're not going to let these, you know, petition will be a number one hold thing. But there's other times that we, we try to get things going ahead of time and, you know, sometimes it bites us in the ass. This time of day.
I think that's an accurate description here.
Yeah, so, but it was with, with good intention for, for, for the residents of that area. I can say that, and it's, uh, was with no intention, so.
And I don't think there was any ill will or ill intent here, just to clarify that. Um, I have a few questions, but I'd like to open it up to the members of the committee first before I, I comment. You were taking some notes, you have a few questions, Councillor Kuzynski?
You know, Mr., is it Mr. Fraga?
Yes.
Yes, JP Kuzynski. I appreciate your joining us and giving us your explanation of what had occurred. Obviously, there was a, a mess up. It sounds like you're taking steps to correct. I, 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 uh, just was very concerned, because I had been on this committee since 2004. And I had never seen anything like this occur before. And, and by, uh, by acting first and without permission, the people's right to weigh in was actually taken away by Eversource. That is a big concern of ours. I think you're taking the steps to address it. We did have some other issues regarding trees. I'd like to, to bring up just a question, but let's deal with the placement of the polls first.
Councillor Peak, any, any comments?
Um, no, not, not at this time.
My only question would be, given the precarious nature of the situation with the polls up and realizing that that had occurred, uh, without the typical process, why wasn't the municipality contacted then, when you proceeded then to, um, uh, lay the, for lack of, I apologize if I have the terminology, but put the lines up? I would, I would have thought, I hoped at that point, if that occurred, that you would at least reached out, notified maybe the clerk or someone in the city, say, hey, we understand these polls are up. We understand that it's kind of occurred without the typical process, and now we're going to lay the lines. Is that okay? Or should we hold off for pending municipal approval? I'm just curious what the thought process was at that point.
We did, I did speak to Greg. Greg Nuttman, yeah, we did have a conversation with Greg and kind of explain the situation. And, um, I did leave a message for Omar, Omar as well. He had not, he did not call me back, but, um, I did leave a message for him to, to, you know, stress my concerns and where, where we were thinking of heading for this, just because, you know, the system was at a, you know, such a vulnerable state right there that, you know, we were, you know, we're essentially, we were, we're two or three days away from completing the project in whole, to be honest with you. So that's, you know, where we're at.
Okay, so you did your due diligence. I just listened aware of that, thank you. Do you have anything else, or can I move on to any of your colleagues if they want to comment?
Uh, just that, you know, I, I understand, you know, um, that we did take that, you know, that right away from the residents to, to comment about these locations. And I just want to just reiterate that we will do whatever it takes to, uh, make that right. So.
Appreciate that. Uh, we have Mr. Kregel and Mr. Yelf on the call. Do either of you have any comments or input? Yes, sir, Mr. Kregel.
Yeah, Nick Kriegel, Senior Supervisor for Hadley. I don't have any other comments other than Mike, um, Mike had given, but if anybody has any questions, I'm willing to answer whatever anybody has.
And tell me more about your position with the company and?
Yeah, sure. So I'm the Senior Supervisor out of the Hadley District. So I oversee our direct line force, our contract line force, um, day-to-day maintenance and construction, and then, uh, system projects, um, out of our district.
Any questions?
I had, I had a question regarding another matter. And this is a rather large project. I, I recall every other project we've dealt with hasn't, hasn't involved as many polls, as many movements or replacements. So it was a larger project and it affected probably more trees than usual. I, I, we've usually dealt with where there's a big tree in the center or a tree and that's been taken down. And I was wondering if it's what the common practice is regarding, uh, replacing this or grinding out the stumps of the, of your trees within the public way. Because we have some concerns about that.
And if either, anyone could fill that question about, uh, tree work and, and what the kind of policy procedures?
Basically, is that something that you could do?
Um, I'm not sure what the policy is for tree removals, but given the circumstances here, I'm sure we could, we could accommodate, you know, that request there. I don't, I don't know, Nick, do you know the number of tree removals that were actually, actual removals that were done?
No, I don't. I know we, we had taken some extra ones that Barry, our arborist, had recommended, but our arborist supervisor, we can certainly bring that back to him and get that answer. And I'm sure he's willing to work with us, you know. Are you saying that for the tree removals, I'm not sure how many there were on this project? Are you saying, you know, certain stumps are the concern?
There were some, and I, I believe we have a guest who can refer to that, one of the citizens.
I'll get to him in a second.
Typically, I know, I know we will, I know typically the practice is not to, if we, if we cut a tree down for whether it's, it's, uh, maintenance trimming or new construction trimming, typically the stumps are not taken out, especially if they're on the edge of the road, unless it's, unless it's a concern or, uh, uh, you know, a customer brings it up to us, we can have that discussion. But yet typically, they do not do every single one.
To do any?
I just wanted to be sure it was within our, our, uh, realm to ask for such a thing.
Well.
It's part of the process.
Yeah, well, and I think especially given kind of the unusual and the unique nature of this, maybe if there's opportunities to, um, to more closely in a focused manner, address, uh, any concerns around the tree removal with this project, maybe the utility would be open to entertaining that? Councillor Peak, any, anything?
No, I'm interested in how this is going, I'm just taking notes.
Okay. We have an interested resident here, just to clarify, so this is public comment. This is not a back and forth with the, the councillors or the, um, representatives here of the, um, utility. So if you have statements you'd like to make or questions you'd like to ask, we'll take that into consideration and we can relay that to them. So if you'd like to say anything at this point.
Yeah, good evening, my name is Don McGaff, I'm a former senior arborist for National Grid for 36 years, probably took a little time. In 2004, I've done some other stuff too. But initially, the, the question is, who has generally daily oversight of D and D power when they're out on the property, when they're out on the road under contract?
Uh, don't answer that, just, these are questions to us and we can relay that to them, Mr. Taff. So just, so your questions are?
And regarding the councillor's, uh, request, um, could a condition of tree removal can be grinding out the stumps of those trees that are on the public way. It can also be for providing healthy tree replacements or healthy trees that were removed. This could be a condition, this can be a condition of, of authorization to remove such trees. Whether it's your contract, whether it's your policy or not, um, the city has the right to, to stipulate that you will grind the stumps out of those healthy trees that were removed on the public way, as well as provide tree replacements of a reasonable size if they want to do that.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, so, um, uh, so to the first question that our member of the public here asked, so who has oversight, uh, for the, the, um, contractor, D and D?
Nick, Nick oversees them on a daily basis. So he is, you know, given the, the work, he is, you know, doing switching and, you know, as we be, uh, there's times we have to switch out the system and or, uh, put it on a, a fast trip curve, depending on what the work functions are for the day. And he's out there daily, um, checking. And then they also have their own foreman who comes into the office daily as well to, uh, check in. So there's multiple, uh, multiple interactions daily where we're checking on that contractor.
Mr. Chair, is it Nick, what's his last name?
Uh, Kriegel.
Freego.
Did you, did you have a question?
I, I can't see him, so you have the, you have the screen.
And I just wanted to clarify too, so, um, I, I'm going to make a statement, you can, you can let me know if this is, this is correct. Typically, within your workflow, uh, when you have poll requests, you, you, you send a petition to the municipality. I'm sure there's other pieces that, that have to come together during that process, just to get up to there. The petition's reviewed, it's either approved or not approved. And that's kind of a rate-limiting step, I'm assuming, to the project. So in other words, typically to proceed forward with poll relocations or installations, uh, the utility would say, okay, we're at this point, the petition's out, we can't do anything until the petition comes back in. And you have, you wait for that, and that's part of, say, the review process, that comes in, it gets signed, it gets stamped or whatever, and then you move forward. Is that, that would be typically how it works? And then for whatever reason, this time it got, it just accidentally got skipped over, is that, is that fair?
That's fair. Yeah, so there is a hold in the system before it goes to scheduling. But, uh, you know, I think for this particular, so I, I get you, what you're, if you're asking though, we do usually typically or start ordering material and go up and proceed with design through, during the petition process. So it's not a complete stop, you know, we don't allow it to go to scheduling. But, you know, typically we work well with most municipalities to find a solution, especially when we're doing, you know, a reliability project for, uh, you know, an area. That's prone to, prone to outages, you know, so, um, certain areas were more sensitive, we may, we may hold off a little bit as far as, you know, putting, putting the bid out to contractor. But, you know, typically in an area like this, we, we do anticipate that we would come to some agreement with the town, whether, you know, we can make, we can make adjustments, we can, you know, which is still things we're willing to do in this process here, and although the, well, the poll's in the ground, but I don't want to get hung up on that, because we can, we will do, we will follow, you know, whatever the board recommends as far as these petitions and, you know, where, where they are. If we need to make any adjustments or some design changes, you know, we'll incur the cost, that's our mistake and we'll make it right.
Appreciate that. So I guess, so my first question to the committee, um, is, um, there's, there's the, there's the installation of the polls themselves, which was our purview to approve, approve and recommend to the council, which we did, which is kind of moot because they were already there. So I guess the first thing I would ask to the, ask the committee before we move on with a few other, um, connected issues is, does anyone have any recommendations? I know there's some questions about trees, so I'll get to that. Does anyone, does anyone have any recommendations other than leaving the polls where they are with some maybe steed or stipulations or requests from the utility in that regard?
I, I don't at this time. I haven't heard anyone actually suggest that they, that the location of the polls is necessarily problematic. It's from what I've heard, it's, it's the concerns about the permitting and the trees that are what people are upset about. I mean, and I think that there, I, I, I could, again, I don't know enough about this stuff to necessarily, like, so there could be places where I have a blind spot, but the initial presentation about why, uh, you'd want to make these changes was like, it felt persuasive to me that this would be ultimately a beneficial thing. So the, the real questions that I still have are, well, it, it, it's really about the fact that there's a constituent concern about the trees, because, you know, in terms of the, okay, so the process, it is what it is, something happened, it's not great, hopefully it won't happen again. And there seems to have been a process change to prevent it from happening again. So I'm, I'm satisfied there. And I don't think that necessarily anyone would benefit from us ripping up the polls. And I don't have any personal strong feelings that they should be in different places from where they are. So it's really just, for, that's for me. If somebody else has a different perspective on this, I'm happy to hear them out, but just, that's, that's where I am right now.
Okay, and Councillor Kuzynski, any?
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with Councillor Peak. And just, I'm concerned for the utility company, Eversource, about their liability for the situation, should anything, give me some wood here. Back on wood, should anything happen, if, for example, if there was an accident at one of the pole locations, the wires came down and anyone were to say, well, jeez, these, these were installed without permission, they, they could find themselves liable. So I'd want it and glad that we're talking about it and we can get it cleared up.
Does anyone have any specific requests from the utility in regard to, um, addressing this, other than just appearing at the public hearing and just being able to speak to what happened or offer some sort of explanation to the public?
In terms of the polls, to me, that's satisfactory. I, I, there's, this stuff, you know, is, is, is on top of that. In terms of where the polls are, this process, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I think, now if it happens again, we're in a different situation, but like, you know, we all, like mistakes happen, things come up, the world's chaotic. So I'm, I'm not like, I, 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 there's no thing, you know, in terms of that work, that I'm necessarily seeking at this time, unless someone from the neighborhood or somebody with a different perspective on this has something that I haven't seen yet.
Councillor Kuzynski, any?
I, I certainly want us to be reasonable about the process. I know Eversource works with us, when there's issues that occur, uh, there's downfalls, there's outages, they jump on taking care of things, they have a priority list, and I'm sure Eastham fits into that, they'll work hard and see that that's taken care of. But, uh, so I, 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 I think this is important, it was very important that they, they be here and provide the explanation. And I think you're suggesting that the explanation be at the public hearing suffices in my regard. I don't think we need a formal letter or anything on file for the process, but others may feel differently.
So, um, can, will a representative be able to appear at our next, the next public hearing, uh, which is March, March 6th, just to offer just a brief explanation about what happened with this process? Is that acceptable?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Um, I think because of the, um, the, kind of the unusual process here, I'd be interested in taking another motion, uh, to basically leave the polls in place, um, and not modify, uh, not modify them or ask the utility to remove them, just so we can document that and, and report that to the council.
I certainly would like to do that. I'd like to amend the, the motion, however, if I may, to include the language regarding the trees.
I was going to take a separate, have a separate discussion, have a separate motion for that, unless you feel?
Yeah, I, I, I see it as part of the condition of the overall project, and that may be important.
Okay, then let, why don't we, so why don't we move into that discussion and we can put a full motion, we can put a full motion forward with inclusive language? Is that satisfactory?
That was true.
Okay. So it seems that my, uh, my colleague and committee member, in conjunction with, um, um, our, uh, local, um, utility and tree expert has put forward. um, our, uh, local, um, utility and tree expert has put forward some recommendations, um, that I'm just reviewing now, but, um, Counselor Kuzinski, do you feel comfortable?
I'd, I'd be happy to read it if, for, for the record.
Sure, and then, yeah, yeah, and then I'll?
It's something I would, I would interpose a motion that we approve, uh, this matter with these conditions.
Sure.
Uh, number one, that Eversource be directed to grind out all stumps and shade, of shade trees, removed within the Eversource project area, uh, at least 12 inches below the immediate existing service area, with ground refuse matter removed. Ground out stumps will be loamed and seeded, well, in, in no later than May 1st, 2024, uh, at Eversource's cost.
Well, why don't we stop at each one, so I just wonder if that's okay, so I can review that with the utility, if that's acceptable. Did you all hear that?
Yeah, I would like, yeah, I mean, so, I mean, I'd like to go line by line here before, and, you know, I just want to reiterate that, the trees were all approved by the tree warden of the town to remove, we didn't do, and I know we, for the poles, we did set those without permission, but, you know, our arborist Barry Crook, you know, spoke to Greg, who I believe is the tree warden for the town, and every, all the tree removals were approved, and all the tree trimming was approved, to my knowledge. I've talked with him.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I just wanted to, you know, I didn't want to, you know, there's something that we, we did get permission to remove those trees and, you know, I, I wasn't there, I'll blend with your, your list of, um, requests, I'm open to it, I'm open to it, just, you know, because, you know, we did make an error here ourselves, so, you know, I just, I'm, I'm not sure, I don't want to make set of precedent with this either, but I am open to do, making some restitutions on this project.
Well, yeah, this is more, I think, kind of some maintenance around those stumps, and basically it sounds like all the grounded, grounding those and looming seating, uh, et cetera, so that, that's more not an issue of whether the trees are removed, but just making sure that where they were, that these conditions are met.
Okay.
Um, um, and, okay, now, uh, this next one, Counselor Kuzinski, if you want to?
Number two, Eversource will provide tree replacements of at least one and a half inches in caliper, 12 inches above existing root ball height, at Eversource's cost, and that, uh, landowners where trees have been lost as a result of this public shade, uh, as a result, um, have priority consideration for acceptance or rejection of, uh, these trees to replace, so that i, if someone has an interest in having a tree be replaced, they could come forward, and that this could be addressed and, and taken care of.
Where would these tree replacements take place, is this on the, no, number two, is this on the public way, or?
Within the public way, and any, uh, lando, any landowner who had a tree removed and objected to that would have the right to have another tree placed in, according to the specifications, not, not a huge tree, but, you know, a small little planting, uh, that, uh, and that all new trees be planted on private property no closer than 35 feet from the public road, so as not to interfere with overhead wires at maturity.
Okay, um, Nick, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Kregel?
I don't think there would be many trees, actually, that, that would be getting placed.
Okay.
I think we're talking about less than three or four.
Okay, sure, um, Mr. Kregel, thoughts?
I do, I do just want to mention that, like Mike had mentioned, uh, Greg, um, and our arborist Barry have been in contact about this project multiple times, and just to reiterate, you know, he did confirm, um, in an email that all private trees that, that were removed were removed with signed permission by the private property owners. And he has also talked to Greg about the possibility of doing some, um, trees to make them more palatable. So it sounded like they're already having that discussion, so to kind of like Mike's point, um, I just, I, it's, it's kind of hard to make that exact answer without having our, our arborist here, but I'm sure we're willing to, to, to do items, it's just, it's hard. If they already have that discussion on the backend, and we're gonna now have this separate discussion about the exact same topic, it's kind of hard to have two different conversations about the same trees.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I, I, I think we wouldn't, excuse me if I may, I think we wouldn't be in this situation if the regular process of petition before cutting and removal had occurred.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, Director Nudelman had talked to me about this too informally, that, that he had intended to have a conversation with Eversource about, um, you know, I'm just throwing a number out there, like a 10 to 1, uh, replacement for, for every tree that's removed, that's elsewhere, that, that, that trees are replaced, they often necessarily be in the, the same place, because obviously they were removed from there for a reason, uh, that would be kind of, um, so, um, uh, and I'm certainly in favor of that, uh, from a, from a, uh, environmental standpoint. Um, so I, I guess the question would be, I, I think it would be helpful to formalize that as opposed to just being a, um, a, uh, unofficial agreement. Um, how, what, is, is anyone here on the call aware of exactly what those agreements may have been?
No, and we'd be open to it, I just, I think we need to know, you know, what we're agreeing to, you know, but, um, certainly, um, from what it's sounding like here, with it, what, uh, you guys are requesting doesn't seem to be, it's like it's gonna be an issue.
Mm-hmm.
I believe we're already taking these steps, but to formalize, I don't know what we would put on, on formal record right now, because I don't know exactly what Barry and Greg have been talking about for, uh, you know, with tree replacements, and, um, the stump planting is not a problem, we can, that verbiage I'm fine with. Um, the quantity of trees, you know, are you suggesting the one-to-one, is that what you, for every tree that was removed, when we planted it at an agreed upon location?
Uh, I'm not sure, because there may have been other conversations that occurred to that effect, how, um?
Uh, I, I think we're talking about some specific trees, uh, that were, that can be, that can be outlined and numbered, and I, and again, I think there are less than a half a dozen.
Mm-hmm.
If we're stacking less than a half a dozen, I'll, I'll agree to that in this meeting here.
Okay, great, perfect, um, and then whatever other arrangements were, um, arrived at with Director Nudelman, we can just let those stand separately. Um, okay, well, um, any other comments? Uh, well, I, I will allow, uh, I will open up to the public again, do you have any comments, Mr. Taff?
Yes, I do, I want to commend, uh, Eversource for, uh, using Hendrix wire in space of, uh, in space of cable configuration, it's glad, I'm glad to see you guys have gotten with the 21st century. Um, I've com, I've commented in the past about, uh, open wire and how vulnerable it is to, uh, trees and wreckage coming down, so it's a real plus to see that, and from the standpoint of the two poles that I saw above 183, residents 183, uh, good engineering, that was, uh, that was a good, uh, that was a good proposal, other than the illegal set.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, and thank you for all of your, uh, attention to this and, and in-depth comments, that's very helpful. Um, anything else from the committee?
I don't have anything else, no.
Okay, um, does anyone want to make a motion then in regard to, um, essentially agreeing to keep the poles as is, recommending that to the, uh, uh, to the, um, to the full council, and then these, and then including these other recommendations, which we could, I, I think we could just, the motion could probably just include accepting these recommendations, like those could be forwarded, unless you, either you feel strongly about reading these fully into the record, which they already were in the meeting.
I, I don't, I don't feel strongly about reading them as long as we, we refer to them, I think that's great.
Okay, anyone would like to make a motion?
I move to approve the, uh, petition of Eversource regarding the poles aforementioned, and, uh, with the conditions as outlined in, uh, the information provided at this meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or abstained, okay, motion, uh, to recommend, uh, move forward three to nothing. Um, I just want to say, folks, um, uh, I really do appreciate your due diligence and attention to this. Uh, Mr. Yelf, who's also on the call, has been a great resource, uh, we spoke a few times. I know that this was a snafu, I'll, I'll repeat again, I know this was not intentional and stuff happens, and I appreciate your being able to, uh, regroup and, and figure out a way forward, um, and, um, do so professionally, so that, and, and, and coming out on a, on a Friday night now at 6:15, would we probably all have a few other things we, we want to be doing, so, um, anything else from, from anyone at Eversource?
No, just, uh, thank you for your, uh, consideration of this matter and, uh, flexibility, appreciate it, and, uh,
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate that it won't, uh, won't happen again, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll move forward together.
All right.
Appreciate it, all right, have a great weekend, everyone.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Do you need anything from?
Okay, I have nothing further, I could move to adjourn if that's the?
Sure, second.
What's your up the record?
Um, so we have a, a motion, uh, uh, to adjourn from Kelsey Kuzinski, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting is adjourned.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.